Okay, I would like to call to order the City of Cherryville's Regular Work Session Meeting of Tuesday, January the 30th, 2024. First item we have to address is the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion from our council to set the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we set the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, motion is second to set the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. All right, we'll proceed down to item three is discussion of rezoning of terrace estates with planning the board members here. Our Planning and Zoning Director, Richard Eland, will start us off with that, and that's pages one through 11 in your tablet. So, Richard, if you'll go ahead and...
...what we were discussing at the last council meeting. And all the planning board, I know Mayor Wade's draft's on there, and he does mark me right more than him.
Ed, yep?
Ed, yep. Any more?
There's two, two that had excused absences. Jackson.
Okay.
Will not be here, they had excuse.
Okay. All right, Richard, you have the floor.
As you know, got 33 acres on Delvee Road that's gone through the Planning Board. Planning Board, at their meeting on December 20th, their recommendation to City Council was denied of the application request. Then at the regular meeting of the City Council on December 11th, public hearing date of January 8th was set for 2024. Then we had our meeting on that date, and the City Council chose to hear it, you know, hear more about it and think about it more, and that's the reason we're here tonight. So, at your next regular session, City Council meeting, we can finish up the public hearing and your decision. I don't know if it will be another public hearing.
Yes.
Just continue where we left off, so there won't be a public hearing. Nothing will have to be advertised. So, that's where we stand tonight, we're here at the work session, and we've got five members of the planning board here at your request.
I'll go ahead and start, and I don't know whether you have a chairman that's going to speak for all of you, or it can be very informal, this is strictly a work session. So, any time you want to interject any comments, feel free to do, I'm going to be out of order. But my question is the... And I really haven't made up my mind entirely on this myself, for various reasons, but my question that I want to ask the Planning and Zoning Board, what was your basic reason for denying what was proposed at your meeting?
As chairman, I'm obligated to speak. I can only tell you what's in the minutes of the meeting that we had, and basically the board wants to deny the request to be rezoned, plain and simple. That's it.
Okay. All right, council, do y'all have any members that you, I mean, any questions that you want to address to the Planning and Zoning Committee?
I have one.
May I say something?
Sure.
Actually, I was acting as the chairs or some of the vice chair because Ed wasn't there at that one, and I'd like to go on record to saying, when we had the second little meeting, the informal meeting, for us to get some more information about the land use plan or whatever, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I know if I had been aware and known all of that, then, you know, I may have tried to interject some things for them to consider that we didn't at the initial meeting, if they could be following the same.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, but that doesn't say why, just other than Frank, if you can relate on it.
You felt like you weren't fully informed.
Well, we didn't, going by the findings of fact and everything that we would have considered, the land use plan or whatever, I think some of the questions from the other members of the board was because of the reduction in the size of the lots that is developed, and that ended up being the reason they chose to deny the request. Am I speaking to you correctly on that?
Okay.
What can I ask? What are, I rode out there too and looked at it, and I rode it down the street, and I sat there and looked, but you see it's going to go. What are the size of the lots, as you know, some of these look like they're a little, they're a little bit bigger, but not much to a degree, Richard, if you can tell.
Bring that up.
The plan you're looking at, Councilwoman, the plan you're looking at here, the proposal, that's where they're wanting to go, from R-12 to R-9 cluster, that would make those lot sizes 6,000, 6,000 square feet.
Let me explain it easier. All right, here's the ones that are on the way in there.
Right.
What they are proposing, see this lot here, the ones out here, you would see that line across there, you would be actually cutting those in half. So, that's how small these lots would be, and able to get the 100 on there, still have your retention pond, your walking trails, and your barrier through there. So, that this would be the size of the lots.
Yeah, with these right here.
So, you just actually cut those in half? Basically, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
This is what I'm working on.
Let me, let me interrupt one second. Mr. Councilmember Abernathy's on the phone, he's out of town, but he's got one question right quick. Go ahead, Mr. Abernathy.
Yes, so my question's from the zoning board. Out of the other options that we have available right now, would they approve any of those other options, or do they prefer any of those other options if we choose not to do the R-9 cluster? Would they be okay with one of the other choices that we have in front of us? Or are they totally against all of them?
Okay, I hope you understood what he was saying.
We discussed that, if I'm remembering correctly, in the meeting, and we just, we had asked the builders on that, and they said it would cost too much to change it to larger lots, but we did ask that question at meetings.
Yeah, that is, that is correct, and to restate, Mark's correct, and Frank's correct. Our whole, I think primarily, I spoke at the last council meeting in the public hearing, and I informed the rest of the board members that I did spoke and what I said. And me personally, as I stated at that meeting, it was, to me, it's the egregious nature of the reduction in lot size. We were, at the, at the meeting, at the first planning board meeting, when we denied this, there were no other options. It was, it was cut it from R-12 to R-9 cluster, which in fact is cutting it from a 12,000 to a 6,000 square foot lot, so that's cutting it in half. All the other surrounding residential property there is R-12, or if you jump over to Dewey Bay, we're talking R-15. So, to go to R-6, or go to a 6,000 square foot lot, in my opinion, was extremely egregious. Now, had we considered or been asked to consider R-12 cluster, or R something cluster, that's a 10,000 square foot lot, or otherwise, I can't speak to what our answer would be, but we were only faced with one option, R-12 to cluster nine, which is 6,000.
You want to see it conform with what's already out there?
Well, and my personal point and opinion is, it's been R-12 for over 20 years. The owner of this property has had ownership of the property for over 20 years, and it's been R-12. So, to me, to all of a sudden, the egregious, again, nature, cutting the lot size in half is not consistent with the intended planning and zoning policies set by the City of Cherryville.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if you're sure what you'd say, but I would say probably back then, there wasn't that much growth going on in Cherryville, so he didn't see the reason to go ahead and develop it. But now, we've got growth.
Well, there was, there was, well, when I started as mayor 20 years ago, there was, there was active talk about developing that piece of property, and it didn't happen.
Did I finish my thought?
Yep.
Thank you. Back then, they didn't have the growth going on. Now, we've got the growth, but the, the land values, real estate values have gone up so much, that if he goes with the larger lots now, he can't sell them unless he loses money on them. And people want a smaller lot now. A lot of people don't want to have to maintain a large yard. They want to come home, watch TV or work, and go to bed. So, he's trying to, and I'm not trying to read his mind, but what I see is all the other cities and communities around here, they're doing the same thing. People want smaller lots now. They want houses that are clustered together with some green space that they can use, the walking trails, that sort of thing. Go ahead.
Those are very good points, and I'm sorry for interrupting earlier, Mr. Freeman. Those are excellent points, and very well taken. But again, we, I feel we as a planning board are, we're ruling on this issue, every issue that comes before the planning board, based on the planning and zoning policies and rules stated in the city's planning and zoning requirements. So, if, if council wants to do otherwise, that's certainly up to you guys to do otherwise. But I would say, and I think I might speak for the rest of the planning board members, if that's your intention, because it's been said, well, we've done it in the past, we've got to do it for this one, I hate that school of thought personally, because you learn from the past issues that come before you, but if that's going to be the case, if the city is going to continue to grant all of these rezonings, then I think it's time to do a drastic overhaul and revision of the city's zoning policies.
Okay.
And thank you.
Yeah, and I would just make another personal comment, and what Councilman Freeman said I agree with to a certain extent, but we've already got two developments that we have approved with the cluster building, and, or the council approved, let me, let me put it that way, the council approved. If you'll check the minutes, you'll see that I did not agree with Recquay Road, and I wanted it put in the minutes that I didn't agree with it, not that I was against it, but I think we should control our growth. I want growth, but I think we should control it to a certain extent. And personally, I feel a lot like this is the same way too. I'm not so sure that we want more if we're getting 150 in one and 100 in other, do we want another 100 on top of that with the same size? So, but that's, that's not my vote, that's the council's, and whatever they decide, I will abide by it 100%. But that's...
Can I say something to you?
Sure.
You get through.
No, I'm through, go ahead.
Well, I, of course, I'm, I'm new to the council, I campaigned on controlled growth, that was one of the issues that I campaigned on. And I know y'all will remember the other night when we were in Gastonia at the elected officials meeting, all the towns in Gaston County were there, or were represented there, and a lot of those, a lot of those mayors spoke and said they wanted controlled growth for their, for their towns. So, I, unless the, unless we want this to go back to planning and zoning and look at other options, I, I'm sticking with my, my original thought that we need to support what the Planning and Zoning Board voted on.
And if we were to send it back to planning and zoning with other options, and Mr. Upshaw's here, I know we discussed it at the last council meeting, you get to a certain point, it is a deal breaker, right? But you could still say limit that thing to maybe 85, is that an option? And maybe make the retention pond bigger from what Mr. Dellinger had suggested, and take away some of the walking and green space, and make the lots a little bigger, is that an option, or is that strictly a deal breaker? Or would you have to discuss that with the developers?
We would have to go back and have it redrawn, and then reprice the grading and see what the lots will cost, and then go back to the home builder and see their thoughts on it as with the new numbers. So, it would take three to six months to do all of that.
If someone was wanting to build out there, wanted a bigger lot, could they buy two lots and build one house on?
Buy the whole piece?
Yeah, they bought two lots, could they make a 12,000 square foot lot instead? Would you do that? Could you sell them, two lots?
Sure.
Make them build one house then?
You could build one house.
Yeah, us as the builder, if somebody wants to buy two lots, it's, they're basically going to have to pay really the price of two houses almost, you know, without taking out, replant on...
So, you're making your profit, not just selling the lots, you're making it on building a house, that's right? Okay.
You know, what I want to point out too, make sure everybody understands, currently it's zoned R-12 out there. So, if they bring a development with 12,000 square foot lots, you're going to get 75, maybe 80 homes out there, and they would be able to do that by right. We would have to approve that. You would have no choice. Now, what happens if you do that is that green space that we've talked about, those trails, and the runoff that Mr. Dellinger spoke about, at that point, you're not going to have that canopy, because those lots have to get bigger, which means the canopy goes away, Mr. Dellinger might face consequences with runoff possibly. So, that's where you have to look and weigh your options of what you're looking for.
Okay, one, one other point that I think maybe we should point out, and I think the city manager could talk about this a little bit, as far as an advantage to the city, what would this bring with the water line?
You're talking about the water line on Delvee Road?
Mm-hmm.
We've discussed that with both developers, and currently, there is a pressure problem, a water pressure problem in that area. So, there, there is gonna, you know, speaking with Raisel Wright, our city engineer, there's going to have to be a new 12-inch water line put in from around Henry Putnam there on Delvee Road to Blackrock School Road. That should solve our pressure problem at that point. Discussions we've had with the developer is they pay half of that cost. I think we do have one estimate already from a contractor, and it's 240,000? It was around 240,000, so 120,000 to the developer, 120,000 to the city, and that, that solves a lot of issues citywide with our water. That continues to help, you know, get that loop that we all talk about, where there's no dead ends, get this new 12-inch line. So, it does solve a lot of problems getting that water line on Delvee Road, which will serve that development for the entire system.
Okay, I knew, I knew we had talked about that when we, when we met with Mr. Upshaw about what they were willing to put in if the city was willing to run that line, so...
Are you going to build these spec houses?
Pretty much nowadays, the market, if it stays the way it is, we will build the house and then put them on the market, and the customers, the buyers are there.
How many, how many do you see building in the first year?
Probably anywhere from 24 to 36.
Okay. In the first round, when you, say if you build three houses, and they don't sell right away, and you have to lower the price to sell them, then you wouldn't build that many in the first year, would you?
That's right. If, if the absorption rate of the sales pace slows down, obviously, we're not going to, we'll adjust our building to that, our building pace.
Are you aware of what's going on with the other two yard developments?
Yes.
How do y'all compare price-wise and size of house and that sort of thing? You know?
I don't know the, the price points on those houses exactly, but our pricing is, we're on average $250,000 in today's market.
$250,000. I think they said their houses will be $300,000 and up?
$325,000.
Yeah.
And our square footage, we're just 80,000 square feet on average for our house.
Looks like they're worth $15,000, $6,000, $6,000, $2,000.
And, and all the homes would be two-story homes.
That's right.
The part of the residential area would be over the garage.
That's right, there is, on the second floor.
Okay.
That's the city manager's.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
You just made the statement that if it's left R-12, I mean, that's, that's their right.
That's their right.
But we do have a subdivision.
You do.
Process.
You do.
They would have to come back.
That's correct.
And have the subdivision.
That's correct. You still have to go through the subdivision process.
Subdivision, subdivision regulations. I, I thought, I just wanted to make that clear, they still have to...
Yeah, any, anything 20 and above, you have to go through the subdivision regulations and the procedures.
That's, that's right, thank you, thank you, Brian.
Any other questions? Got a lot of information to digest, and of course, we'll have the continuation of the public hearing on February the 12th. So, if you want the planning committee to look at it, if they do, he said it would take, what, three months to redraw it? So, what, Richard, what's the options if you, if you go in there, and what's, what's the options if you still, if your cluster bill, the square footage can't be changed? I mean, the setbacks can't be changed, or...
Only if you get to a different cluster. Right now, it's zoned R-12, which means y'all could do R-12 cluster development, which would make the lots 8,000 square feet, or you could just make it an R-9 and make, you know, it's R-12 now, maybe just make it a plain R-9, and it could be 9,000 square foot lots. Or you could up the rezoning to R-15 cluster, which would make them 10,000 square foot lots. So, they got a few options there.
If you look on page nine, those are the options laid out.
One, two, three, four, five, five different options you could go with. It's cluster R-12, R-9, cluster R-15, or just plain R-12. Okay. Or cluster, yeah, cluster R-9, which is the first one on there, is what they're asking for, correct? Okay.
Would the side setbacks be different for each one?
They are different.
The side yard setback?
Yes, they would be different. Oh, the side setbacks, I think in the first two or five, I mean, five feet, but in the last two that the council approved, they made them six feet, and that's what they presented, is six feet side setbacks. Oh, no, you know, six...
So, you got 12 foot between the houses?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Planning and Zoning Director, City Manager, or any other discussion? If not, you have a lot to think about between, well, you got about 15 days, so we'll come back up. All right, thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item four of the agenda tonight. I do, I did overlook something, I'm sorry, but we did the consent agenda, I need a motion to accept the, the regular agenda, agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second, to accept the regular agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, we'll now go to item four in the regular agenda, and this is our end-of-year report for our Cherryville Police Department, and Chief Brandon Hunsucker's here. That's pages 38 through 44 in your agenda packet.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Council, Manager Dalton. I want to start off by saying thank you. Today is my one-year anniversary with the city, so...
That's right.
A year ago today is when I started, so thank you to all of you for allowing me to do my daily task here at the city and allowing me to have this job. Over 2023, the police department was a very busy place. We have, we've strived to become a more professional agency, and with doing that this year, we've changed all of our guys' uniforms, that's just kind of one of the started things. We also moved into a new style for the cars, that will be on all of our new cars from this point forward. We added officers, thanks to you guys, we added officers to the road, we put some new officers in positions, such as a new detective, which gave us three detectives in the detective division. We put some flex cars on the road, that gave us at certain points, or certain times during the week, that gave us anywhere from four to five guys working at one time, which has really helped us, you know, to serve the citizens. We started building some bonds with different agencies. We have placed two of our officers on a fugitive apprehension team with the county police. Those two guys have been very successful and have helped, it's helped us serve once here in the city, along with going out and serving once in the county, from here to Belmont, Mount Holly, Gastonia. So, we're taking crime off the streets all over. You know, we've also added guys this year to the, or last year to the drone team at the county police department, which has really helped us out, you know, just building those bonds, we need those between the different agencies. 2023, we also lost a lot of years' experience. We had two gentlemen retire, Captain Mark Stout retired, John Mark Ruisel retired, that was a total of 58 years that those two gentlemen had worked for the City of Cherryville. So, that speaks highly of how people, when they come to work here, they stay here. You know, if you guys remember back in 2022, the police department received a grant to do some construction on the building, that was the roof, some interior remodeling, that is now complete. Along with that, we redesigned our communications center there at PD, we gave it some upgrades, we added new desks, which are ergonomically designed, our dispatchers can now stand, they can see it, they have a three-monitor system... Uh, they have a three-monitor system, which is curved. It's, it's easier on their eyes, it's easier on their, you know, when they're typing to see all the screens. Uh, and we added some, just some different things in there to make them more comfortable, uh, to have to sit in there for twelve hours at a time. You know, I look forward to what the future holds here at the police department. That's the things that we have majorly accomplished, I feel, over the last year. I'm gonna move into our call, call volume and call log right quick. They're in your, the things you have on your computer there. Now, if you notice from last year, uh, you will see that our call volume went down. The numbers that were presented last year, those numbers were kind of padded. If you can see the second, we're on the one that says call log summary, and there's three, three columns, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. This year, we answered a total of thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-two calls. Last year, it showed a total of nineteen nine forty-five. There was some padding in that from basic security checks that we do on our own. If you look down to, um, let's see, there at the security checks, if you notice, last year it was ten eight three eight. This year was four nine four four, so four thousand nine hundred and forty-four security checks this year. Those are security checks that our citizens have actually called in and requested for us to do. I took basically six thousand calls out of that because it was things that we had initiated on our own. So I wanted you to see true numbers and not numbers that we had padded. If you notice, anything in green has, uh, went up, anything in red has went down. Our motor, motor vehicle crashes went up, one wreck basically from last year. They, they tend to stay around the, I'm sorry, ten wrecks. They tend to stay around the two fifty, two forty mark. I'm just gonna kind of hit the highlights. Our traffic stops did go up this year. Um, and that basically comes from having more officers on the road. They're out at the peak times where they can actually stop the cars. Our assaults did go up slightly. Subjects with guns, those went up drastically. You can see from last year, twenty twenty-one, they listed none. Twenty twenty-two, we listed one. Twenty twenty-three, we listed twenty-three of those. That number is so high, the, uh, the NIBR system, which is the reporting system, uh, that the entire country uses for law enforcement, they changed the way things are coded. Uh, so that is basically, any call we go to that the person on the phone says there's a gun there in the house, that has to go in under that, um, that there was a gun on scene. So those did go up drastically. Our assist other agencies, four hundred and twenty-nine versus three eighty-two last year, that is, uh, because we have created those positions assisting the county police and the other agencies here in the county. Our citations went up drastically, and our arrests also went up, as you can see there. I'm gonna move over to, it's, it'll be the same style list. It'll have twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, incidents and investigations. You can see our investigations went up about two hundred and something this year. Went from eight sixteen to a thousand eighty-one, uh, versus last year. I credit that to us having three detectives in the detective division. They investigated more things, they were able to make more arrests. So that actually helped us out. It, it, it doesn't look like it when those numbers go up, but, uh, that was actually a, a great asset to us, having those guys in there. Knock on wood, we had zero murders versus the last two years. Let's see, no robberies. Our rapes did go up, as far as, there again, that goes by coding. Uh, the NIBR's coding kind of changed some of that for us, so, um, let's see, another big one was our larcenies. There for a while, Walmart had stopped calling us and stopped making calls. This year, they picked up a new loss prevention person, so they have started since calling, and we're getting more calls at Walmart versus where we were a year ago. And then our drug crimes. If you can see, our drug crimes have went up. But that's because we're reporting those now, a little different than what we were before. That's a hundred and ninety investigations into drugs versus a hundred and thirty last year. If, if we're investigating that, if we are purchasing drugs, uh, from our drug fund, all those are included in that now, um, which actually shows that we're out making more investigations into the drug scene. And then the overdoses. You can see in twenty-one, twenty-two, there's none listed. I don't have a clue what that was because they weren't keeping up with that back then. When I came in January of last year, I started keeping up with overdoses. That was one thing I wanted to document, so that we could see where we were spending our time. So we had thirty-five of those this year, or last year. We had, um, we had one that we suspect was an overdose. We still don't have the autopsy report back from that. Probably wasn't, um, and they'll probably say it wasn't, but, because the person had some other health issues too. So, no, I, I really can't, can't say that we did have.
Do you know what, what type of drug you saw most?
Uh, I, I'll be honest, this year, fentanyl and heroin were our two biggest. I don't know if you noticed, last, two weeks ago, we made a, a rest with ninety grams of fentanyl, I think it was ninety grams. You know, that's a large amount of fentanyl for this area. So if, if you break that down and just give that out, that's a, that's a lot of people that could have been harmed with that amount of fentanyl. So you can see, the last page there is the call volumes per year or per month. Uh, you can see most of those did go down, um, and some of that was just from the security checks that they had been putting in this form in prior years. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Hunzucker?
Yeah, I have an off-the-battery question.
Absolutely.
When is the sign gonna be?
Well, I, I'll be honest with you. Ms. Hovis, I'm, I'm working on it. Funding is a, is an issue to get that sign out. You know, Callaway Construction, thank the Lord for them. They, they helped us out with the building and painting the building and all that. We don't want to put the old sign back up because it's gonna completely clash with the building. Funding is my issue with that sign right now. Hopefully, in the new budget year, come July, I'll be able to, to fund that. I've tried to work out a couple of things, and just right now, it's just not working. Due to some other things that we really need, so. But I am, I am working on it.
Okay, you're working on it.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Chief?
Good job.
Good, good report.
Good report.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, that brings up to the end-of-year report for the Cherryville Fire Department. We have, well, Chief Walford, Jason Walford with us, and that starts on page forty-five in your tablets.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Dalton, I, I too would like to thank you for hiring Chief Hunzucker. It's been a great year. Uh, we work closely together, uh, nearly talk every day. Uh, just to give you an example, there in our May sixteenth storm, uh, when we received thirty to forty calls all at one time, uh, fireman's natural reaction is to respond, help. So it took us a while to assess and get back to the station to set up our instant command system. And while everybody's out on calls, uh, I walk out to our station that is filled with limbs. There's more limbs on the inside of the station than there are in the yard, to find four police officers cleaning our bay. So other than any other error, this is as close as I've ever seen fire and police work together, so thank you. For our end-of-the-year report, our calls are up. Our total was twelve fifty-four. To break it down, our largest response was to emergency medical calls. Our second was service calls. And our service calls are down as we cut out unlocking vehicles. Uh, once we discovered this was actually illegal for us to do, if there's no emergency situation going on with the vehicle, and after speaking with, uh, our attorney, Mr. Huffstettler, before he retired, we had to cut that service out, but our call volume still, uh, increased throughout the year. We have hazardous conditions, which are leaks and spills. Service calls that, uh, where we help any citizen in need, and our, our outlook is if it don't cost us any money and it don't put us in danger, we're gonna help whenever we can. Good intent calls, most of those are helping out our fellow departments, uh, with needs that they may have, running them water or assisting in any way possible. False alarms and calls are self-explanatory. Severe weather, the bulk of them, eighty calls were on May sixteenth. And, uh, special incident types are when we can't find a code, we, we enter it there. All right, our average response time. Average response time, the medical calls is four minutes and thirty-seven seconds, and fire is three minutes and forty-six seconds, which are under the national requirements. So, uh, EMS is normally a little bit higher because our guys are, are very good at listening to the radio and knowing when paramedics are ahead of us. So sometimes they slow down because it's better to ride safe. Turnout time is the time it takes for the guys to get up, get dressed if they're asleep, uh, and get on the truck. So those times are also within the allowable minutes, I mean, timeframe. The next part is, uh, our call volume comparison from two thousand thirteen to twenty twenty-three. You can tell the COVID years that when we had to limit the type of, uh, medical calls we responded on, we took a great hit in our call volume, but we are steadily increasing back to what we were two thousand thirteen through, uh, eighteen. Our next section is type of fires, which gives you the estimated property damage. I will go on record, firemen are not taught to assess damage and, uh, monetary value, so we use our best guess estimate. I've had several insurance adjusters through the year look at our figures and said, you're, you're doing good for no training on it, but, uh, this is our estimation of, of loss for the events that we've been to. Mutual aid, mutual aid given last year was nine. Mutual aid received is forty-six. Uh, I'd also like to point out that we do rely on our surrounding volunteer departments greatly. They do help us out every chance they can, and they've been great to work with. And I'm happy to announce, and I've spoke to most everyone about it, we're opening our mutual aid policy. If they need us, we're hitting the ground running. So, uh, hopefully next year, when I give this report, the aid given will increase drastically. Off-duty response to calls, as, as you know, we are a combination department. We have full-time and we have part-time. Uh, part-time are paid at different rates because some can just respond to fires, some can actually fill in for us when we're off, and they have to have necessary certifications. So what we greatly depend on is our full-time staff responding on their days off, because they are better equipped with our operation and trucks, and, uh, everything flows better when we have a couple respond on their days off. So you can see with those numbers that, uh, they're only coming back to the big calls, basically, so that's, they're not gonna have drastic numbers in the forties and fifties. That's, they're only gonna come back for the calls. They know we need them. I'm happy that their numbers are above mine because I trust my guys. Uh, the calls I feel like I need to go on, I go. Other than that, I trust every full-time employee I got to handle anything we're faced with. The new certifications this year, uh, Colby Hefner got fire and life safety educator one, two, and level three. Philip Smith received chief one oh one. Captain Rayfield received fire and life safety educator one, two, and three. And our, one of our new drivers, Doyle Brown, completed his driver operator, mobile water, driver operator pumps, and aerials, and completed his fire and life safety educator one. So we had a good year of training for people accomplishing some certifications. That's not to mention the training we hold, which our training hours total for the entire department are five thousand seven hundred and forty-six hours of training. And for our size department, that is, that is great training. Total building inspections completed are a hundred and one, and fire prevention, six hundred and thirty-seven people were reached through our efforts in twenty twenty-three. These people, uh, were educated through station tours, school field trips, career days, community events, and fire prevention week activities. And that concludes my end-of-year report. Do you have any questions?
Any council members have any questions for Chief Walford?
An off-duty response, do they get additional pay for coming?
Absolutely. The fireman's, uh, pay is measured on twenty-eighth day. So, uh, they get a paycheck each week, and then at the end of that twenty-eighth day, that's where we add in their training time, off-duty response, and then that's when they're, if they're given overtime or comp time.
Thank you. A lot of training involved, and it shows.
Yes, thank you.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
What's our ISO rating?
Right now, it is a two. We just had our inspection, uh, three months ago, four months ago. We were lacking on volunteer response, uh, and lacking on volunteers stopping by the station to get our ladder truck and have it on scene. So we, we've got a probation twelve months that we can try to improve that. If not, we go back to a three. So we're working hard trying to, you know, uh, hit those two points and hopefully retain our two.
We have some, uh,
Two's good.
Major problem with the ladder truck?
Yes, we, we have. Uh, we're, we're having to, uh, find a remanufactured engine and have it replaced in, in, in the ladder truck.
You got a cost estimate on that?
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
What's a new one cost?
You can't get a new one.
A million.
Uh, they wouldn't even tell me a price because they said you, you can't find one. The only thing you're gonna find is a remanufactured engine. And, and.
No, I mean the new truck.
Oh, a new truck. A new ladder truck. We got an estimate today of two-point-four million.
Two-point-four?
And it's three years out.
And three years out. Uh, that's basically what the league, uh, told them when they had their insurance meeting, and, and all departments are facing this. We had, uh, I helped with the Kings Mountain Fire Chief Assessment Friday, and that was the hot topic. Everybody talking about how long it's taking to get fire trucks and how the price has tripled on everything.
Can't imagine.
Jason, let me ask you, how many volunteers do you have that's needed to get that, keep that two rating? You've got.
We have thirty-three right now, where, uh, probably half are active. Where from nineteen eighty-nine, when I joined, up until here recently, we'd have forty to forty-two, and, uh, you'd have twenty-four to twenty-six around there that would be active. So, uh, volat- volunteerism is dying in the nation, and, and we're doing recruitment and retention, uh, retention ideas, trying to improve it, but it's basically moving to, if you have a fire department, it's gonna have to go full-time.
Even with the mutual aid, that still doesn't help you hold.
Yes, and the county's going through a, uh, redistricting service district, uh, with all the volunteers, and, uh, uh, depending on what they do and the final decisions on that, I don't have anything concrete, but I've heard that they're trying to put part-time staffing at all the volunteer stations, so that should help.
That would help a whole lot, especially for ETJ. Do y'all run ETJ?
We do. Uh, like I said, we've opened up our mutual aid policy to where if they need it, we're going. We've put safety measures there that certain people respond back to the station to, you know, man our second truck and, and run calls in the city. But as much as the outside departments respond with their trucks and, and manpower, we're wanting to pay back as much as we can.
Okay, great job.
All right, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Back when, Jason, back when I first came to work for the city, and, and the average person, I didn't know then, myself, the average person didn't know how the ISO rating affects them. Plus, it probably affects businesses maybe more than it does residential. I'll have to defer to you for that.
Absolutely.
But, but back then, our rating back then was what, a five?
Yeah.
Maybe a six.
Well, no, it was actually a six.
It was a six.
It was a six back then.
And you know, some people come up to me. And you know, some people come up to me and say, well, y'all just waste too much money on the fire department. I just don't understand why you have to have this and have to have this and have to have this. And uh, that, this is why we have to have that, those things.
Well, I'll explain that and try to be as quick as I can. Uh, the system is, is, is run from a NS, which is a volunteer department that's, has no water supply. They have to use tankers and uh, uh, water shuttle. Uh, down to a class one where they have everything they need and the money, the city gives them all the money they want to buy anything they want. Uh, all the manpower, trucks, everything. So the system is flawed, I'll be the first one to say that, but it works, uh, and they fine-tune it as much as they can. So for us to be a level three, you have to have uh, eighty to ninety, or seventy to eighty points. Okay, and I may have my points wrong, but just for the story to explain it, uh, when we got a three, we were at like seventy-one point three points. We had a choice of, of, of going to a two, I meant, or remaining a three. Well, of course, you, you, you strive to do well and you want that lower number because it means you're doing a great job, so we, we took the two. If, in hindsight, if we would have thought about it and stayed a three, we, we wouldn't have to be as stressed and pay attention to all the details. Uh, but then again, we want to. So when we done this last inspection, we missed it by two points. So that's how the scale works, is if, if we would have been in the mid-point range, we'd have been good to say, yeah, let's stay a two and feel comfortable about maintaining it. But with things that you can't control, I can't control volunteer response, so uh, you know, uh, I try, but when it comes down to it, it, it depends on if our volunteers have the time and respond. So uh, to go back to your question of money. Now, from a two to a three residential, you're not gonna see, you're, you're gonna see pennies increase. Commercials may see a little bit, but it's not gonna be enough to scoff at. Uh, so if something drastic happened to where our department was to go from a two to a six or an eight, that's when uh, uh, business owners are gonna come knocking at your door saying, what's going on? What, what are we, what do we need to do with our, our fire department? Uh, residential's will, will see a moderate increase, but uh, it's still, I don't know why, but it, it does not affect residential as much as it does industrial. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Good job. Okay, we'll move on to item six, and this is discussion of the upset bid process. This is in reference to the property that the city owned on Bates Avenue. It was par- two parcels, uh, parcel one three zero seven one eight and one three zero seven one nine. Um, I think we did get a, a bid process on it. It went through the uh, upset bid process, and there was no action other than the first bid, am I correct?
Yeah, yes, sir, Mayor, we received an offer, we ran it in the New Cherryville Eagle Lincoln Times, it ran on January the eleventh, and you can see the ad on page forty-nine of your packet there. Uh, you know, we went through the ten days, the ten days obviously fell on the weekend like it always seems to do, so we waited till January the twenty-second at five o'clock to see if any bids were accepted or received. And we did not receive any other bids other than the original offer from Stagecoach Investments for thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. And um, we will automatically, I mean, there's, we'd automatically take the bid if there's not an upset.
You both either accepted or rejected, that's correct.
But will we need to do that tonight, or we wanna put that on council?
That is your choice.
What's the pleasure of council? Okay.
So we, we disagree, we agree, disagree.
Well, it's gonna be the same here, there, then, as it is today, so.
Yeah, I think it's mostly bookwork uh, anyway, I mean, we can't change it. So it's uh, and was she wanting to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept this offer to buy those two lots on Bates Avenue from the city.
Yeah, John, um.
You still on there, John?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Alright, I'll second that.
Mayor, City Council, if I may, um, the only thing I would suggest in this contract is for, for a city, that we give a special warranty deed as opposed to a general warranty deed.
Can you explain the difference?
Okay, so a general warranty deed means that any person in title in the back chain of title, you're giving warranties that that title is good for all general warranty deeds in the back chain of title. If you give a special warranty deed, you are saying I'm limiting it to only anything the city has done while it has been in title as record owner going forward. So typically when we see foreclosures, when we see um, deeds out of um, REOs, real estate-owned uh, corporations, we're gonna see a special warranty deed, we would expect to see a special warranty deed. So that's the only thing I would, in this contract that is just a standard, it's, this is a standard residential contract. But since we are a city, I think we should limit our liability a little bit more by giving a special warranty as opposed to a general warranty deed.
Okay.
What page is that?
It's page seven.
Okay, could I have amendment to that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a difference, we add this special. Uh, what'd you call it?
Special warranty.
Special warranty deed, thank you.
Okay.
Brian, what is that zone, do you know what that property's on?
Uh, I believe that's R, is it R nine right there? Does that sound right?
I was reading about it.
What's the zoning of Bates Avenue right there, off of Academy? I mean, it's residential, but I don't know.
It's R nine or R twelve, I think it's R nine.
I think it's R nine, I'm about positive it's R nine.
I'm pretty sure it's R nine because of the size of it.
Single family or duplex?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. I already have a motion on the floor, and did I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to uh, accept the bid as presented with the, with the special warranty attachment to it. So at this time, uh, all in favor of this motion, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
He did say aye.
He did, okay, and all opposed? Okay.
One.
So uh, it did pass, so we will accept the uh, money at this time. Okay, now we go to uh, other business. Um, I, I got a call today from a gentleman, uh, and he asked me, we, we talked for a long time, maybe thirty, forty minutes. And uh, he was very concerned about the city had done nothing for uh, Greer Bean. And he asked me if we would consider doing something to show our concern of, of how he impacted our city. And I told him, I, all I can do is bring it up, I don't have the authority to do that, that would be something that would take council action. He said, I said, what, what are you suggesting? And he said, well, maybe a bronze monument or maybe naming one of our parks after him or, and I told him that we had discussed of maybe behind the Truck Museum, maybe putting a stage there and maybe having part of our uh, entertainment there instead of the mini park. And I said, how would you feel that we might, because it's at the museum and we would need their permission to do it, how do you feel about maybe just waiting and doing something at that time? And he, he was perfectly fine with that, but he did ask that I bring that up tonight under other business. So that, I mean, there's no action on that, it's just something we can be discussing. Counselor Monhovis?
Um, I don't know, it's the same gentleman that, that talked to my husband uh, a year or so about that. He wanted a road or a street named for Mister Bean. And um, and uh, at that time, my husband did contact the DOT, and they said they would look into it. But once they saw that uh, Greer Bean Boulevard down at the college, he said, we can't do it. He said, at once, you can't have two roads named after the same person, so that, that went out the window.
Yeah, and, and that was dealing with DOT, but if you don't deal with DOT and you go to an off-street, then we do have control over that.
We do have a road, the Dick Bean Road, oh, very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Dick Bean Road.
We sure do, yeah. And I know we just did one for J L Bean in front of the Methodist Church, from Methodist Church to to uh, the high school, I think that, or maybe to the cemetery.
Yeah, you just put a sign up, I believe.
But I mean, that's just, that's just something for discussion, we can be.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking.
I think this guy wanted Highway one fifty there in front of the old Carolina Freight, but that, that didn't fly, that wouldn't fly.
Yeah, he, he mentioned, he did mention that, that the other person's name that was on it did not even live in Cherryville.
So we're talking about the same person.
So, okay. Alright, any other business from council?
Uh, I'll let you know, I think we're getting closer on the permit. Uh, we've received everything back from Riesel for the site plans, we've received uh, amendments back for the mechanical engineering.
This is the gym?
Yes, for the gym, and the engineer, uh, the structural engineer has submitted his stuff, but he forgot to sign the, the document, so they kicked it back to him again over a signature, so hopefully within the next couple of days, we'll have everything submitted and get the permit to get started.
Okay.
And uh, I did speak to Mister Tommy Summer this week, and uh, the appraisal on the land has been completed. Uh, so that's been taken care of, we're getting uh, that paid this week. And as soon as the permits are issued, they said they would sign the, the land over to the city of Cherryville and we can start building. And the paperwork's already ready, it's just waiting to get signed and taken to the register of deeds.
Okay. Okay, any other business from any council member, staff? Anyone? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion, we adjourn, second.
Motion and second for adjournment, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed the same, there isn't, we are adjourned.